It is six thirty-six and I am calling to order the regular meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board. Uh, planning board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. This meeting is being held both in person and virtually through Zoom. Uh, pursuant to the COVID nineteen rules allowing public meetings to be conducted remotely so that boards and committee members as well as members of the public can participate remotely. And just a note there, we are looking to keep track of what's going on with those rules. We don't know what's going on yet, but we are looking. All right, uh, are there any public comments? Seeing no members of the public, we are going to advance in the agenda.
Are you sure?
Derek isn't looking.
He passed the flowers, yep. All right, uh, moving on to minutes for acceptance. We have, uh, four sets of minutes that are up. Uh, and let's, let's take them one at a time. I did have, um, a couple of questions and possible corrections on those. Let's go with. Think that is February. Yeah, let's go with February, I'm looking at, see which one opens up first. Uh, I guess this is actually, let's go with November eighteen twenty twenty-one.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, here in the first.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Here in a first and a second, uh, let's have discussion. Uh, I do have a question on this, it members presence, we have, uh, uh, Alice Francois and Bill, middle member is absent, it's blank. Uh, I think I was at this meeting, but I was definitely either at the meeting or absent. Uh, yeah.
Are you sure?
Same, same for, uh, for Mr. Demoliere.
Does that have any more?
Any more, yes.
Yep.
Have a seat.
Uh, so, uh, that, that should be something that gets updated. Uh, other than that, they look like they were in reasonable shape for me, but I'll pause for a little bit for everybody to scroll through because I see that, uh.
I've, I've read them. I don't have any problems with them.
I do, I think we're fine.
Although the, the votes on them, looking at the votes on them, they were three, three oh is the vote. So, uh, I imagine that means I was not at the meeting and that John wasn't either, or else the votes wouldn't be noted three oh, so we probably just need to be added to absent. Yeah, I was on the board in twenty twenty-one.
I can't remember breakfast, so.
Yeah, 'cause I, well, I remember these discussions.
You made a question?
Yeah, 'cause, oh, this, no, this was the first meeting where we were talking about the, um.
Country club option.
Yeah, country club option, yeah, I missed that meeting and then was at the next one, I was away traveling. So, yeah, that, that would be the correction for that.
Okay.
Any, any other corrections or updates?
Just some minor spelling things since, again, I'm just making them here and they'll be automatically reflected in the document that I say is starting. No big issue.
Any other comments?
No.
All right, so I'm hearing no further discussion, let's have a vote on acceptance.
Steiger, aye.
Look, don't I.
Homens, aye.
Demoliere, aye.
And the chair is aye, the motion carries. So, the next one is, let's do.
I want to take them in chronological order.
Uh.
Twenty twenty-two is the next one.
Yeah, what's the file name on that?
That's twenty twenty-two, I'm sorry, PB underscore minutes underscore two zero two two zero one zero six.
Okay, that is the one I opened, so January sixth, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a, a motion for acceptance?
I'll put a motion that we accept the minutes for PB minutes for, uh, Jan. six, January sixth, twenty twenty-two.
And a second.
I will second.
Here in a first and a second, any discussion?
Quick, quick note, um, on this is, I don't know whether, I put these corrections in, but I don't know whether you had them or not. Um, they show up in yellow when they're posted, so maybe it's what I put in last time and then we didn't get to it. But anyway, with other attendees on that list, you list in Jeff Blake. I think after that, you should just put, um, counsel for Hubbardston from KP Law to identify who he is. And then there were a couple of typos, but you probably fixed them. And they're not important anyway.
Yeah, and these older minutes, I go through quickly looking for typos.
Okay.
And I don't change them as they come in from Andrew.
Well, architectural and aesthetic, did you spell aesthetic right? The other one, if you did that one, then you probably caught all the rest too. It's on, uh, the board reviewed the following, it's about the fifth bullet point. Seventh bullet point, architectural.
Isn't that one of those words you can spell two ways like airplane?
Well, I just had to look it up to correct it, so, you know. Oh, maybe it is a two-way spelling, anyway. That was the only thing, I just thought Jeff Blake, because, you know, he was sitting in for Carolyn.
Yeah, my.
And oughta, he oughta be tagged as who he was, so.
All right, anything else on those? Here in no further discussion, let's have a vote.
Steiger, aye.
Look, don't I.
Homens, aye.
Demoliere, aye.
And the chair is aye. Motion carries, so next on the list is.
February one, uh, twenty twenty-three zero two zero one.
Yep, uh, do we have a motion?
For a motion that we accept the minutes for, uh, twenty twenty-three, February one, as, uh, presented.
A second.
Well, here in a first and a second, any discussion? And these ones, I thought, look pretty good. All right, hearing no discussion, let's have a vote.
Steiger, aye.
Look, don't I.
Homens, aye.
Demoliere, aye.
Monroe, aye, motion carries. Uh, and the last one is our last set of minutes, and this is, um.
Two sixteen.
This is our most recent meeting, um, just to catch everybody up on what happened. We had, um, we had come in and there was no internet in the room. And we'd advertised it as a high-grid meeting and, uh, I was expecting members from the public and members of the board to participate remotely, so, uh, we decided, well, we shouldn't do this meeting. And we just talked, uh, about a couple administrative matters and then adjourned the meeting, but the, uh, the minutes are there. Uh, I would like to suggest one correction there, um, is that in the first paragraph, it was not solely due to Member Steiger's inability to participate. It was members, so it would be Member Steiger and Member Demoliere, or else it would just be members. All right, any, anything else on those? Uh, how about a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I second that motion.
All right, and, and any further discussion? Here in no further discussion, let's have a vote.
Steiger, aye.
Look, don't I.
Homens, aye.
Demoliere, aye.
Monroe, aye, the minutes are accepted.
Does this mean all the minutes are up to date?
No.
No, no, we're still working backwards.
There, there's a lot of twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one.
But you're catching them here and there, that's great.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're all on the list. We're gonna, we're gonna make it complete, it's just gonna take another couple months.
Yeah, we're, we're making good progress.
That's wonderful.
So, next.
I presume you are Mr. Picari?
Yes.
Yep, well, next on the agenda is, uh, parcel two dash seventy-six, Ron Bicherry, New Templeton Road, uh, seeking information on the A and R process to divide its five point five acre lot with four hundred and fifty feet of frontage and possible construction in tow. So, come on up.
I have a, an older A and R which you signed when I had sold off, the easternmost portion. This piece here was divided off with original six and a half acres 'cause the neighbor here had only twenty-foot side bound, uh, bounds on each end of his house, so he wanted to be able to span, so that's, that's out of the picture. And I've drawn a, I made a copy of that and I've drawn a, uh, layover of what I'd like to do now. So, this is gone. This is four hundred and fifty feet of frontage, which just by shitlock is enough to do a single, a single-family home and a two-family home here as by right. With a little bit left over. And the acreage is enough to, uh, satisfy the requirement to add, uh, I think it's thirty thousand square foot for each, each, uh, residence. And I meet all that, there's no, this.
What is, uh, Mr. Chair, what is the total acreage that you currently have there?
Five and a half.
Five and a half, okay, so just confirming that, so, even, even without the proposed parcel, right, that, that, that does, that does not include that?
Correct, that's gone, it just happens to be on the drawings, so it was an easy drawing to use.
Is this was posted on our documents?
That's, that's his original lot.
Which is, which lot is it from this?
It's lot two, second, second one.
Okay.
Um, but the back portion of that lot is gone, as shown on his plan here. It was originally a six and a half acre lot, it's now a five and a half acre lot.
Correct.
Okay, that's bisected by the utilities, man.
Yeah, and that no longer exists, I've gotten, uh, recorded document from them to remove it to across, diagonally across the lot to put it in this thirty-foot offset here and re-joins the, uh, original path over here. They haven't used it since nineteen sixty-three, I believe. And he said to me, if you find any wires, just cut them out, we don't use any, and it should be, honest to God. But I've got it all recorded, it's all deeded, uh, took me two years. His AT&T down in Atlanta was, you know, slow. Uh, there's a fella up here, I forget where he's from, but he was pretty helpful, an engineer that's in charge of this area for the AT&T and right-of-ways like that. But anyway, they don't want it anymore, they have no need for it with all the satellites we got and all the different means of communicating. So, I've got it documented that it comes actually from my front lot line here, back three hundred feet, then it shoots over to rejoin the original one, which is here.
So, you live on lot one, on this plan? This is your house in the corner of, uh?
No, no, not at all.
Crossroad, no?
No.
There's, there's no structure currently on this lot?
It's just land.
Yeah.
Oh, it's just land you own?
Yes.
Okay.
Next to me, there is a house on the corner, log cabin, I believe, log home. I don't know those people.
Oh, this, oh, New Templeton, or Cross?
Yes, well, at the corner of Cross and New Templeton, there is another house, it's a house. So, I don't know all the rules and regulations about Hubbardston and their planning, but I do know there's a seventy-five-foot front offset and there's a thirty-foot side offset, which I've shown on there. And this is the intended home that I'd like to put in there. There is a wetlands that crosses here, it's a seasonal wetlands, a very, very minor nature, but I guess it has to be, obviously has to be taken care of.
And documented, yes. And nothing will, at this point in time, the, the parcel that you're looking at, I'm just trying to understand here, so you have one parcel that would be this one here, which is the two hundred and fifty feet frontage?
Correct, yep.
And that would go all the way to the back, or how?
Yeah, all the way to the back, I, I didn't show it that way. You, I've gotta have a hundred and ten thousand square feet to make this one work and whatever it takes for the, uh, the draftsman to draw it out, you know, it'll be at least that.
And then you have a two hundred feet.
Correct.
What are these lines here, I'm just trying to understand these, that's what's confusing me.
That's the, that's what the draftsman put on when this was an A and R. You see, he, he just shows the new, uh, boundaries of the three pieces, actually two pieces, the one for himself for that, for this lot to be sold. They, they, they don't participate in our discussion here at all.
Oh.
Or then, for that matter.
Yeah.
Okay. So, those can be removed?
Oh, yes, those won't, the next, the next level of drawing won't include any of, a lot of this, it's just convenient to have this drawing, it's already exists.
It's already there.
He, he's just here in a preliminary, this is not, no, no, this is not the A and R application.
But, I mean, if he's asking the question, my, my, what I'm trying to inquire here is, is what do these things represent so that we can provide the right information?
These don't participate at all.
Very good, okay, so, basically, if you think about it, it's just two hundred and fifty feet, straight line down,
Correct.
and, uh, all the way up to the boundary of parcel eight.
Yeah, and that's what I've shown here with this red arrow, I didn't draw it all the way back, but it's, you know.
And, and, and the only, only wetland that you have is the one that you have at this point in time mildly marked there with.
Right, and, and kinda goes like squiggles across, uh,
Okay.
to Mary Ann, to Pinto's house, I think her name is.
So, we have a rule that you have to show the wetlands or have the surveyor, um, state that there's at least, what, forty thousand square feet of upland, is that right? Something like that, I have a list.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, and then there's some other things you have to put on, you gonna go back to Mr. Sazak? Sock?
Who?
The surveyor, Sock?
No, I don't know him.
Oh, well, you, you have a surveyor that did this, who did that?
Yeah, uh, this Capco guy that I use regularly.
Oh, so he could go back, so he's got the work, okay, he would be familiar with our check list.
Okay, well, if you have a copy of it, I'd like.
I've got a copy for you.
Yeah, it's, um, it's also published in our consulting rules, was it four dot oh one?
That forty thousand square foot requirement would be very.
I can give him this copy, I have little notes on the side, the pencil's mine, but you can have it.
Thank you. That forty thousand square foot upland is very easily met with what I've got there from the web. Way, way, way easily, luckily, there's a surplus of land here and the exact right amount of frontage to do the two things I wanna do.
Yeah, so ultimately, we just approved the A and R, we're not certifying that it's buildable, we're not certifying that you need any of the other requirements.
That's correct.
We just ultimately certify that, yeah, this, this plan, um, this plan meets the, the plan itself meets these requirements that are imposed by our bylaw, so. Yeah, it's reasonable for me on track, and we obviously make our decision based upon the plans that are presented at the time.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to gather information right now.
Yep.
Um, is there any meth, um, information you could give me regarding the wetlands? How close can my house be to the wetlands? Is that something that's common knowledge?
That's not something I know off the top of my head, it would apply in your situation.
Is it five hundred feet? No, 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 no.
You wouldn't have a house in Hubbardston.
We, we do have, we do have an active building commissioner now and he ultimately, uh, could give you that advice.
Well, he does that, the building, I know you were without one for quite a while.
Yep, we got a new one, Duffy, he is fantastic, he's very responsive.
Yeah, I know Duffy.
Yep.
He's from Sterling.
Can it sound like you're building a driveway in the back there?
No, sir, no, this would be, this is gonna be a two-car garage right here, and I'd probably have a little turnaround to back out and it'll come right into that area.
So, this, this is all in the back of your, i- i- into what the projected, uh, property, uh, building would be?
I don't get what you mean by back.
Behind the house, saying the wetlands would be.
Behind the house.
Oh, the wetlands, yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
Yes. I'm sure, I taped it with a, I've got a, uh, accurate hundred-foot tape and it's two hundred feet from my lot line to roughly that edge. And remember, it's not like it's a canal, it's a kind of, of, of wetlands, you know.
The, the biggest issue you may be confronted is if you had the wetland in front of your house.
Oh, yes.
And you have a driveway and all of this.
Crossing it and whatnot.
That, that's where you typically end up having.
This area here, again, is pretty substantial enough for the septic needed for four bedrooms, you know, so I don't anticipate a problem there.
And then the well is the other thing you have to keep in mind.
It has to be a hundred and, a hundred feet away from the septic.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, again, I don't.
That'll be, that'll be your first stop on this, you know, evaluating the feasibility here. And as indicated, it's not the planning board's issue.
Yep.
But I'm gonna give you this to take with you.
Thank you.
This is your lot.
Yep.
And this area here is a two hundred foot, two hundred foot setback from the little stream, which has implications under Title V for your septic design. But, you know, talk, talk to your designer, they'll have, they'll be able to advise you on how you can approach this.
It just starts from here, there's not even any starting point, it just leaps out of the ground evidently, huh?
Yeah, I guess so.
'Cause it dries up under some, nothing there, just brown dirt.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, I appreciate this. And anything else you can give me for advice, um?
There's a form you have to fill out.
To, to turn in the A and R?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course, yeah, I just download that off whatever.
I think if you give your, uh, consultant or the person who's going to be doing, you give them that, they should be able to come up with a new plans. And then, uh, ensure that you have sufficient copies when you come back.
Yeah.
Because one copy will stay with us and et cetera.
Gets recorded at the right stage.
Gets recorded, et cetera.
Yeah, once it's approved, I have to record it, right?
Yep.
Exactly.
Yeah. And is that, is there a distribution, I mean, do you give it to like the assessors or anybody else? Or I bring enough copies, or?
If you bring three copies, you'd be, no, including the Malar, the Malar that we assigned, and then you take the Malar.
Right, record it.
Bring it to registry, right?
Yep.
Well, okay, is that it? If you can give me other further advice, I always like advice from the right place. I was on the Sterling Planning Board for twenty-six years.
There is nothing more that we can give at this point in time, except that if you are going to follow these and make sure that you have a, uh, surveyor and a consultant who understands obviously what they need to do, they typically know how to make this happen and oftentimes, they come here representing you at this point in time, so that if there's any questions that are more from our perspective, they can answer them right there and then.
Correct.
We're pretty formulaic on the A and Rs, there's really not a lot of surprises.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I like to come, go to this introductory type thing because it's a way of gathering information and not having, uh, everybody scratching their head.
Absolutely, you've, you've done the right thing, and we appreciate the fact that you're looking at this proactively.
Well, thank you and good night.
Thank you. Good luck.
Had this planned for a long time, I bought it nineteen eighty-six.
Oh, wow.
Friend of mine was real to, I was here and he says, I got a great deal for you.
Who's that?
Uh, you know, he worked for Norton Company.
Oh, okay.
I knew him real good, I can't think of the name right now.
I hear you.
Yeah, you know how it's like, he was still great friends, yeah, no problem, but I just don't ever see him anymore. Well, thank you again.
Well, thanks for coming up.
Yeah.
Stay safe.
Take care.
And be well.
It is, no one helped you when I was coming in.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so moving along the agenda, old business, uh.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, thank you for coming.
We don't have any that's not gonna be covered in administrative matters. So, administrative matters, review of proposed solar bylaw revisions. So, I would like to, um, I'd like to kick this off as kind of a general discussion on what everybody's thinking and, uh, really ask Alice to kick it off because she's spent more time looking at this than anyone else. So, uh, Alice, let us know what your thoughts are.
Well, you know, the timeline here, it was two years ago, we sort of stopped because MRPC came in, right? But at the time we stopped, we had, we were very close for a two, we, we had done two things. We'd done, if you wanted to put Band-Aids on the existing bylaw, and that's in here, we'd go that route, or if you wanted to follow Ethol's model, which was much clearer and included a lot of other things, like, for example, our bylaw that would join the changes is an aerial picture, right? But it's much more sophisticated to do, to do a sightline drawing, you know, which was what would actually look like from the street, 'cause you can't really tell from it. So, anyway, Bill looked at all of them and then we, and then it just came to a screeching halt. So, I mean, I have a lot of information, but I think that, you know, you gotta decide, do you wanna, do you wanna try to do it, did you, did you get the, this list, was this on the list? No, okay, maybe, maybe not, maybe, but I sent to you?
Uh, I believe, I, I believe that got distributed to everybody.
Okay, so, it, it was a basically a list of.
In the email, sent, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it basically a, a list of the major issues we tried to adjust by, by proposed amendments to the existing bylaw. So, those were, we added the best, we changed, and I don't think there was a, I can't remember whether there was really consensus on this or not. Presently, you only need two acres to put a solar field up, this would increase the minimum to five, and they have to be with, sort of together with one continuous, contiguous acre for sighting purposes, meaning for the setbacks and everything else. So, we, we did put in that increase in minimum lot size, we put in technical specifications, limiting the height of the panels to eight feet and buildings to ten feet. The size of the best units, which are, would you, um, kind of like a, kind of like a temporary building, you know, they look like as kind of a container, actually, but a size for those per kilowatt hour, um, access, uh, prohibiting pesticides and herbicides. Uh, we increased the front setback to a hundred feet, and this is a mistake on here. We also did the side and back to seventy-five feet, or to fifty feet. They're currently, so, they're, they're currently twenty-five. We increased them to seventy-five, that's what we did in that draft. And then we put in fencing provisions. So, the things it didn't address was that the Ethol bylaw had, that people were suggesting to us, and there's been some state, this original bylaw was based on, I think, a two thousand and ten state model bylaw, right? So, there's been a lot of discussion and updating and so on. So, the things that a new draft would do would be, include the goal of protecting a budding landowner's community views while by habitats forests, those kind of things. Um, it would have, there is in the current bylaw, no maximum capacity, in terms of how many megawatts you can build or the land area. So, in theory, you could put in a hundred acre solar field and there would be nothing to stop it. We had discussed in a, in the draft, proposes a twenty acre maximum for a solar field, and a one, a one megawatt, which could then be doubled, right, if you put the best unit in, you get almost the double output. So, you can get a lot more, more, uh, kilowatts out of the, when you add a best unit. But anyway, those aren't in there, so if you want a maximum, they're not in there. But they are in the proposed draft. And there's no maximum field size either. So, no maximum megawatts and no maximum field size. There's no prohibition or limit against clearcutting, um, except, there was one change in the, it wasn't included in the redraft of the, the additions to the present bylaw, which I can, which, the present bylaw says the setback is fifty feet and you can clear up to half of it if it's shading the solar fields, which leaves you with very little space. So, this is, moves it to seventy-five and says you can't cut it. That's what we meant to do and that, that would be, if you wanted to go with the, the Band-Aid approach, right? That's one Band-Aid that needs to be fixed. So, we also had a prohibition in this new one of no, of using previously disturbed land, so farmland, gravel pit land, and not clearcutting forests. But it does have a easement, uh, uh, maybe, it does allow you to cut some of the contiguous forests to get your, uh, plan, to get your solar field built, but you can't just go in by a forest and clearcut it, if you were to go with the proposed bylaw. There's the present, the present, or the, the proposed bylaw has, um, in addition to preference of citing it on disturbed land and gravel pits, I think this might too, it has a, uh, if, if you can prove that it works, you can get waivers, like the gravel pit, that might be a place where you'd wanna put a hundred acres and you could say, ask a waiver from the twenty lot size and, so that would be another advantage of doing the new draft. And, um, it does require that, it does have a prohibition against, you know, ridge lines and hillsides and, and it has a, uh, provision for a study, that sightline study. And there's also, at the moment, no, it can be limited, it can be located, assuming you have the acreage anywhere in town. So, we did discuss, but we never got to whether you wanted overlays, what you wanted to do with that, but you still wanted to allow it everywhere in town. It makes some sense to allow it everywhere in town, but the ridge lines also really matter. 'Cause if you look at like where the cell tower was proposed, right, that doesn't go through. That is a person that has a lake ridge way in back, right? But the town, they won't even, they're complaining about a cell tower, imagine clearcutting it for a solar field up there, you know, so. So, I, so I don't know, but it was just, it was too much for me to sort out because a lot of things still need to be like decided by the board. But we did decide last time, we don't wanna. But we did decide last time, we don't want to separate into regulations and we're just gonna put it all in, right? So that's, that's the short, the short version of where we are. If you really wanted to try to get one to town council, I mean, to the town meeting. This wouldn't be that hard to do with the Band-Aids. The other one needs, does need some more work, but a lot of it's editing work. Like integrating the best into all the other provisions. So I don't know what you want to do, but I feel bad. I felt like I spent a hun- thousands of hours on this.
Well, there's a lot of good work on it. So from, from a procedural standpoint, if it was to go to this town meeting, we would have to refer to the select board tonight. So we would have to be able to walk away from this meeting and say, hey, this is something that we think is in a place where we recommend sticking it on the board. So I guess the threshold question that determines where we go with this tonight is where's everybody at and what are you thinking? Is this something we want to try to work through with the Band-Aid approach? Or do we want to spend a little more time working on the broader approach that we also have a draft of? What's, what's the board's appetite?
I think I'd feel more comfortable going with the Band-Aid approach just for now. Can we do that just to protect us more? And then work on the other provision over the next year and then go back and do it again? Does that make sense?
If that's the board's vote, we could absolutely do that.
What do you think? Do you want to leave things as they are now? Because I don't think we have enough time to do the rewrite.
Definitely not for a complete rewrite. I do believe there are advantages of taking what has been presented as the Band-Aid approach, which I, I don't look at it as a Band-Aid. I look at it as something that is already, no, I, I look at it as something that is already beneficial.
Right.
There, there are changes in there that are required and needed. And it's an incremental process. And so we've, we've, as Alice has mentioned, she's put a lot of work into this here a couple of years ago. There are components in there that can be already leveraged, lifted and put as part of this, the upcoming meeting. And I think there's no reason why we should not consider that as a viable option. And then continue progressing with the remaining, the remaining items.
Yeah.
Do you want?
So let's refer to it as the incremental approach.
I think it's a Band-Aid better.
The no bells and whistles.
The new bylaw, but we can't get it done tonight.
No way.
So we should do something to protect the town for the next year and then put in the new one next year.
What we have now, yes.
Why don't we?
Because I think we need the new one, but there's no way that's getting done tonight.
No.
Not in a satisfactory manner. They won't require more fixes anyways.
Right. Correct.
Yeah.
At least, it's been a lot of work put into it, so that will give us a good, good basis.
A good starting point to talk about.
Well, I think you ought, we ought to walk through the, if you're gonna want to do that tonight, we can walk through this one, which is in your draft.
Yep.
And we can walk through, the yellow lines are pretty much.
The changes.
The changes.
Yep.
And then I've got this one change. Didn't get in there. I think it's on the deck.
So, um.
But I could do that. And then you could have a sense why we agree on this stuff. Because I don't think we ever like really had a vote on the twenty. Well, there is no size limit. Maybe everything in this was already agreed. I'm not sure, but I think we should walk through it.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
That makes, yeah.
I think we should walk through it too.
Yeah.
And, well, this has been something you've worked on for a long time and, and in honor of your last time meeting with us, would you care to, to walk us through the changes?
Sure, sure, sure. All right. And the, and the one that's missing, put it back. Okay, so if you can call it up, there's a couple of things.
So just, just to make sure we're all on the same page, in, in our documents, this is referred to as solar bylaw with revisions, correct?
That's right. And sadly, I think I bumped a line in mine and that's gonna make it a little confusing. But that's all right, we'll get there.
I'm sorry, which one are we looking at? Is this draft new hub solar bylaw?
Uh, well, that's what I'm trying to figure out to be sure, because we have.
I had it buttoned. I had it buttoned.
We have draft new hub and then we have.
Solar draft number three.
Solar draft number three, this is solar draft number three.
That's what I heard.
Oh, so solar draft number three is what we should be looking at. Okay.
And I lost it here.
You want to use this to go to.
If you go into today's date.
No, 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 I'll get. Today's date.
Yep, right there.
Hang on. All these years, and I haven't figured out, I use a stupid Chromebook.
Solar draft number three is MRPC's product.
Oh, it's not solar draft number three?
Planning board documents. I gotta get to the meeting. It's just ridiculous.
Yeah, put that. And slide. Slide, slide down?
I don't actually, I'm not sure.
Twenty twenty-three.
And then slide down again.
I'll let.
There you go. Three one, oh, three, zero one, that's, yeah. And then in here you go, uh, slide down.
Oh, that's okay, that's okay.
Yeah, this doesn't have all the yellow marks in it.
Solar bylaw.
Solar bylaw, yeah. That's the folder.
Yep, that's the folder.
Yeah, I, I did this.
And then now go into where it says PV, uh, to PV twenty-one?
Mars back to the attached.
Don't, 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 rhythms. It's not easy to get there.
Is this twenty twenty-one? Oh, yeah, okay.
Can I?
And then there is the one that is on the bottom. That's the one.
Because it was also the one she emailed.
I don't.
That, that, he's right. That's the way we go.
Yeah. That's what I thought they were talking about, and that's not any of these.
That, that's the.
No, that's not it. That's the new one.
I, the, yeah, I think there's a different version that you emailed that was also distributed to the board.
Maybe we could run copies, right?
Let me, let me, let me, let me throw the one from the email up there and let's all look at that one.
Is this a?
Yeah.
Ready for solar draft number three?
No, no, no. No, that, that's the re, the whole rewrite.
Okay.
So this one though, I did send. I did.
Mark, Mark's loading it in right now.
Okay.
You're uploading it into the shared, shared drive?
Yeah, that way we can have one copy.
Yeah.
Just a second. That sounds great.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
New hub?
All right, so now we've got solar bylaw with revisions.
Is that the one? Google Drive?
Wait, where is this now? Can email or? About the email?
Did you just share by email? Refresh, refresh your, if you're in the Google Drive, refresh it.
Solar bylaw with revisions.
Right.
I'd refresh it.
You have it right there. That's the one.
Oh. Easy peasy.
If that was easy, I'd hate to see difficult.
Yes, this is it. All right, so.
Okay.
And it should have.
All right, solar bylaw with revisions.
It has highlights on it.
Okay. Did you copy, paper copy?
The one I have is just like a tiny bit off. All, but it's all zoning districts. Okay, that's it. So we can go. Okay, so we'll use the one here and I'll just check it against this. Okay, so no, so this doesn't make any changes.
So only focus on the highlighted sections?
Only focus on the highlight. This, otherwise it is what I believe, exactly like it's.
Can you see? Oh, you printed it?
I, I believe it is, you know, I mean, I haven't, I couldn't, I couldn't devote a hundred hours this week to figure out everything. But I believe this is exactly a copy of our present bylaws with the highlights being the additions. I believe that's right.
That was what I was guessing.
Okay, and if, if that's, but somebody needs to actually truly check that and make sure that I didn't, nothing got cut or anything. But I don't think it did. Okay, so you got twenty, twenty point two five, right, down the bottom of the first page? It includes solar battery storage. So the, and then solar battery storage is defined, which is the definition next to that. And then, okay, and so then you go, no, no, we're with changes to get to twenty, twenty point two point twelve lot size. And this makes a minimum lot from eighty thousand square feet, which is roughly two acres to five acres. And then.
And there's something in blue there, so that is also.
Yes, okay, so then lots must conform to zoning setbacks for each district as they are located and is crossed out because we've put new setbacks that are bigger. That are a hundred in front, seventy-five feet from the side. And then this, this, a minimum of one continuous acre must be available for sighting. So this, this makes it clear that you, you know, you have to have an acre set aside for sighting. I mean, it's a little bit confusing, but the idea was actually Bill Murray's idea. He says, so if somebody comes in and they say, okay, I can buy, I put my wall-to-wall panels, you know, now, he, he says you do need space for equipment and maintenance. And so that's all gonna be provided too, and we, and for the setbacks and. So you could build, so you would.
I don't know if it's gonna be clear to a reader what sighting is in this context.
Yeah, yeah, that was the idea. So you could, we could just put, um, kilowatt lots, we know. We could just, no dwelling or other structures except those structures that. I guess what has happened, maybe I, maybe I can't do this as well as I thought.
No, it continues on the next page.
Yeah, it's on to the next page that are.
It's on the next page.
That are part of the facility.
No dwelling or other zoning districts.
Yeah. This continues on the next, if you pull a little bit further down, that's where it continues right there.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So you're fine.
That's my printouts. So that was the idea. Maybe you don't need that. Maybe you want to take out the blue and just say five acres and that's implicit in it. All the works would have to be, because you do have to do the setbacks, right?
Yeah, I think what, um, this was, this was an issue that got raised with the marijuana bylaw. Because we, we had suggested setbacks that made it very difficult to do it in the acre size that we had specified. Like a parcel would have had to be in a perfect square or else it would not have been possible to do it because of what the setbacks were. Um, I don't, I don't think that comes up as.
The, the redo has ways to calculate the area as part of it.
Okay.
So maybe we just, if you have five acres, you can put a solar field in it.
Can we stipulate, maybe with approval of the planning board, we can modify something, you know, just in case it doesn't fit, they can still come and talk about it?
Well, you can always, you can always ask for a waiver.
Right. Can we, can we mention that in there just in case it doesn't fit? We can always tell somebody no, but if it, if it's just a slight modification because of the terrain.
Well, I guess we, we could, but I guess ultimately the question at the moment is, is that blue session, section even really necessary?
Well, here's the question. I, I'm trying to remember whether we have, because I had, these two, these two are running parallel in my mind, right? In the sighting, can you put this on a house lot?
I'm sorry, can you put what?
If you had a five acre lot and you already have a house on it, would you be allowed to put the commercial, you know, these are, a big solar field on it? Yeah, I guess that's a question, whether it has to be like a dedicated five acres for exclusive use as a solar field, you know?
Well, no, no dwelling or other structures except those that are part of the facility are allowed on the designated parcel.
So that'd be no.
Okay, so that's in there. So why don't we just, since it is ambiguous and I too muddled tonight to tell you what the actual thinking was, eliminate the blue line, all right? So it's a straight five acre. And we're talking about what we're proposing. Not proposing anything till we get to the end and everybody's agreed anyway.
All right, so who on their computer, Mark or keeping the official on that?
Yeah. Okay, so then go down the.
Mark will do the official edits.
I mean, these weren't, these weren't like huge numbers of things. They were just sort of basic things. Okay, so now we're down to.
Twenty dot three dot one. That's the next change.
Compliance with laws and other regulations. Oh, that was just adding the battery energy storage units, right?
Yep.
So construction shall be consistent with applicable state, including these, all right?
And, uh.
We actually should add in there, and the, and the bylaw, our bylaw regarding battery energy storage, which didn't exist. So it should be all.
You can mention it.
The, the construction and operation of all large scale solar photovoltaic installations, including batteries, shall be consistent with all applicable. But we have local.
Yep.
But we might put local state and federal requirements. Do you want to put a separate thing in, in regarding the best provision or bylaw?
I'm, I'm reluctant to put in specific references because when things get updated over time, those specific references get.
Right, those get updated.
Okay, okay, well, that's it. So it's got to comply with local. Let's see, this, these were basic Band-Aids. No, they may be fail. All right.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, that's covered.
I think this was done before Trans One, I began to have the best.
Well, and I have a question related to that too. So we have, we have it now and in here including solar battery energy, or solar battery storage. Do we need to update that with the, or reference the definition? I hate to reference.
Yeah, why don't you do, why?
But the definition of batter, battery energy storage system. From the best bylaw.
Yeah, why don't we do, do that? I, just, just do a word change from battery energy storage to battery energy storage system and then best, right?
Does that make, does everybody think that makes sense?
I think it makes sense because it makes it consistent across the bylaw.
All right, all right. All right, one, one more time.
So instead of solar battery storage, all of that should just be battery energy storage system, the same way it's defined in the best bylaw.
And then you can put in parentheses, B, B capital E capital S S, like we did in our bylaw?
Yeah.
And refer to it, you can do a word search and do that. Because it does appear a number of times. And we, that's what kicked off this whole set of revisions to begin with. Because they added it, remember, as a, sort of a, a storage building, right? And that was not one.
Right.
Okay, so, so we can do that. We can do that. That wouldn't be hard. All right, so.
Next is twenty-three, four, two, required documents.
Yeah, required documents, plan showing, so the difference here is the five. Go to roman numeral five under that. And I think this was actually Bill Murray's suggestion again. So it's, it's this language. Documentation of major system components to be used, including the PV panels, mounting system and inverter. And there you put the best again, right? Change it there. And then with technical specifications of the major system components, including solar arrays, mounting system, electrical equipment, or supporting equipment instructions. No arrays panels shall exceed a height of eight feet. Accessory battery units and the cooling equipment shall not exceed ten feet in height and are limited to one fifty foot long by fifteen wide by ten foot tall unit per two megawatt. System. Now, what did we finally, with the best, we allowed them to go up to ten?
This section is a site plan requirement and we've suddenly gone into.
Yeah. Should we even have that in there?
Height restrictions.
With technical specifications, you could, is there another section called technical specifications?
Yeah, it seems like everything that starts with the no arrays panels, that should be in a different section.
Dimensions and density requirements, maybe twenty point three eight with the setbacks and the, and the fencing. You could move it to dimensions, because they are dimensions, right? So with setbacks is the first section of that and then screening. I don't know, apparently you can, the solar panels come in a lot of different sizes.
Well, there, there's twenty point three point eight point two. Which, yeah, which is solar panels.
And apartment structures and fencing, that's probably where it should be.
That seems like where that should go.
Okay, so if you want to, if you agree with the statement in that.
Oh, that explains.
Is, is eight feet a reasonable requirement? That's what I wasn't sure, like how big are standard buildings for these type of things?
Right.
And that came from Bill Murray. He knows, but if we came up with those numbers, then I don't know.
I wouldn't have any.
Well, if it came from another plan, right, in this plan, probably was.
Maybe the height requirements should be something that we look into and add in the revised bylaw rather than the Band-Aid.
I think that may have come from.
Yeah.
Just so that we don't inadvertently make sure that no one can put a solar panel in. Well, we can also.
Also, there's another issue here, is this limits it to a two megawatt system of capacity.
Yep.
To one building for a two megawatt, and we approved under best ten megawatts, did we not?
Well, that's it, one unit per two megawatt system.
Per, per two megawatts.
Oh, okay.
So technically, if you had ten megawatts, you could have five buildings.
Exactly. Correct.
Right.
I think this is right. I don't think I winged it, but I can't.
I, I would imagine, right.
Oh, you brought, from my head, exactly.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I.
This is, this is correct.
Okay, I think it's correct, but we can.
Yeah.
I'll look it up again. I, um. I think, yeah, I think these are standard units for the, remember we went out there when we walked the system?
Well, yeah, for that time.
It may have been from then engineers.
For, for that time and, and quite frankly, these are changing because there's a lot, there's a lot more density in, in, in these units nowadays.
But there would. We get smaller, the buildings, or more gas.
Well, it changes.
Or you could, no, you can, you can, you can put more megawatts in a, in a storage unit.
Okay, all right. Well, I think this is right.
But you're, the way you're describing here, that it shall not exceed.
Yeah.
Right.
Fifty by fifteen by ten, I think.
Should we move it up?
I, I think, I think we should consider taking. I, I think, I think we should consider taking that out for now and putting that in the more substantive revision.
That's my opinion as well.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Because to Francois's point, the technology is evolving pretty quickly.
Okay.
We need to have our bylaw be able to accommodate that too.
Yeah, well, and we, we know, we know from hearing from the public, uh, and a couple of times when they showed up to talk about other things. Uh, the, the idea that solar sightlines are important to them, and I think we're doing a good job addressing that.
Mm-hmm.
The fact that they, they want setbacks, I think we're doing a pretty good job addressing that. I haven't heard any specific complaints about like heights of the panels, although I can see how that could potentially be evolved in sightlines if.
Mm-hmm. But if we have good coverage on the sidelines, to block the view of it.
Yeah, and it's something we can work through and future revisions, yeah.
Right, in the bigger plan, we can address heights once we confirm reasonable heights.
Correct.
Yeah, cause, and in terms of thinking about the big picture and where this could come up in a short amount of time is. We, we have had people reach out to us informally about solar, um, putting in solar in the last year or so. But ultimately, what the limiting factor has been is, um, it's been the public utility, it's, it's, it's not.
Your ability to observe it.
Yeah, it's not been us, there hasn't been room in the grid, or it wasn't in an area where there was three phase power, there were issues like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so there, there will be projects that likely come back in within the next year. So, we definitely want something that we can live with, and we are definitely gonna hear more of this before we get a chance to go around.
There's gonna be one going on apart from Westminster Road in the near future.
So let's take out the sentence that begins, no array, no arrays panels shall exceed eight feet, but leave the first highlighted end of that.
Yes.
Technical specifications here, okay, and then, um.
Yeah.
Yes. And the following sentence, starting with accessory battery units. Yes.
Accessory, and cooling, right, right, right.
Yeah.
The sentence before that you leave in, but that, but that sentence you take out, is that two sentences?
Two sentences.
Yeah, just two sentences, okay, alright, so then, um. Again, I'm trying to remember, but, so with this seven, the drawings and photographs, this would be the minimum of what you'd want. And I don't know what our, what is the present bylaw, must have, have, not have this in it, name contact information, see, proponents. So this, this actually should be another Roman numeral, cause it's not related to the contact information, right? So it should be V, V I X, I have those Roman numerals. Drawings, photographs, and studies showing color rendering is not less than one inch to fifty feet, showing sightline views from a budding streets and properties of the proposed installation. So they do, you do have some sightline studies, right? Let's say if your heat, you know, on this street is what you're gonna see. Color aerial view both before and after proposed installation, showing tree coverage and buffer zones, again, that scale, and a glare analysis. Which apparently is important on some of these.
Are, are, are these things defined anywhere, or is it clear to people what we're talking about?
I think, I think, I think they were, again, this is done with kind of Bill's help, um, I think they, they're standard technical stuff. Color renderings with a scale, views from budding streets and properties. And aerial photographs, right, I mean, I don't think you need definitions for clarification, but I do think it should be V I X, right? You gotta submit, and I'm wondering, why does it say, if any, oh, it's and is the, cause it's a list, right? So you could take the and out and just have drawings.
Okay, so this would be I X drawings.
Yeah, photographs and study showing.
Photographs, etc., okay, that, that makes sense now, so it's not related to, to Roman eight.
Okay. Right, but it is part of the, uh, required documents. This would go a long way to, to letting people see what they're gonna be looking at, the aerial photography of the sightline, so.
Right, right.
So what you're saying is, is the site plan includes Roman one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and now number nine?
And nine, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I agree.
Okay, alright, and then, oh, but that's maybe A. Oh, okay, no, it's, it's nine, and I guess that's, let's see, documents of actual perspective access. A site plan showing, okay, those things, and then B, documents of actual prospective access and control, operation, maintenance plan. Okay, that makes sense, none of those were changes, right?
Yep.
True liability, insurance, financial, okay, goes on, alright, so then it's, we're up to twenty point three six, operation and maintenance plan. This again is like, this was, I think Bill Murray's, so it's the operation and maintenance plan, he wanted to add, this plan shall include. Measures for maintaining year round safe access for emergency vehicles, snow plowing, stormwater controls, and general procedures for operating and maintaining the energy facility.
Where are we?
Twenty dot three dot six.
Twenty dot three dot six, operational, operation.
Fire access road and landscaping. Operation and maintenance plan, and of course, with the use of pesticides, it's also wasn't prohibited, and people feel strongly about, and herbicides. And that was one we've had to fight for, one of our, uh, special permits.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's okay, because it is an operating and maintenance, how are you gonna maintain it? You gotta maintain it, cutting it, not with pesticides, alright?
Is.
That's why that was there.
Is that a reasonable restriction?
It is.
It is, it's actually being used by several towns right now.
Okay.
That was, I was gonna ask too.
Yeah, it is, it is, especially with all of, uh.
Well, the people don't want stuff applied.
They don't, and this, and they gave it to us, and I think it was ninety one, Westminster was the one that we.
Mm-hmm.
And then there was the other one that had the battery energy storage system, and one of those two specifically, we said, this is what we want, cause other towns are doing, and they said, we can do that, just mildly. Alright, so then utility notification, alright, so nothing, you jump down, twenty point three point eight one setbacks. Uh, the front, front yard depth shall be a hundred feet, cause you're.
Yeah, you need to include the word B, because you crossed it out.
Yes.
Shall be one hundred feet.
Instead of whatever it is in the zoning districts, it's an extra hundred feet. Now, that's something you can debate about, but what we had was.
Should it be at least a hundred feet, with the rest of them say at least, but that one says just shall be.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, at least, a hundred feet.
Sorry, you're a hundred and two feet away.
Yeah.
Side yard, and the side yard is to seventy five feet.
At least seventy five, yep, over here, seventy five.
And then. Screening and buffering may require separate setback C section, I don't know where, where that's from, cause that section doesn't look familiar.
No, that is, I, I don't think that that's correct, that's, that section.
So I think that, maybe you just wanna strike that line, again, I'm trying to get basic right.
Yeah.
But, the one thing you have to, which maybe should go in here is. It actually occurs later, but the present bylaw says later on, three point, three point, ten point, we're getting close to this. Three, no, two, three, ten, two, so we're coming up on this. Alright, let's just progress, and when we get there, I'll, I'll put in, okay, so solar panels and appurtenant struc- appurtenant structures and fencing. That has to be reasonably, it's hull, bake, weight, okay, so this, this is where you can get at the bulk and the height, right? Shall be subject to reasonable, but not limited to shelters, and the battery energy storage facility, that's what's the correction there. And then fencing wasn't specified in the other bylaw, so we had talked about putting fencing not greater than fate, eight feet, and shall surround the entire field. And shall be placed four inches above the ground to allow migration of wildlife, that's a sort of an important new thing that people are doing.
Mm-hmm.
And solid fencing may also be required at the discretion of the planning board. Maybe, you don't wanna make it, maybe you don't wanna say discretion of the planning board. If the planning, maybe you wanna say, uh, if the planning board, you mean, you know, discretion means, hey, no matter what, this is our discretion. Put a solid fence around your five acres, right, maybe that's not what we wanna do, maybe you wanna say, solid fencing may also be required, if necessary, to screen the view. To adequately screen the view, would that be better wording? Required if necessary.
Yeah, I think so.
Screen maybe.
They're gonna wanna fence it all off anyways.
They will, but this is solid fencing, which is much more expensive.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And we got into that actually with the tower, remember, it said so, you know, solid fencing, and it's up there on the hilltop, right, we're good, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that would be better, but you could see a situation where that might be a reasonable requirement.
So, the language there was.
Was, solid fencing may also be required, if necessary, to adequately screen, uh, view of a solar facility. We had this horrible fight with ninety one, I guess you guys, most of you guys were here, right, where they, we had, the guy clear cut, or maybe there was nothing planned there anyway. But he wrote, but, but he was allowed to clear, it only was seventy five feet, and you were allowed to clear half of it if it screened the view, so you're down to thirty five feet.
Right.
He took out the wall, and the neighbor across the street just went ballistic.
They went wild.
So we tried to fix it by saying, okay, well, put these dirt mounds on the front, and you go, go buy it and you'll just see.
Down there at Williams, right?
Really, really not.
It looks better than it was.
At, well, about a hundred, I think it's reasonable to do a hundred, cause you're not looking at just one little house there, you're looking at forever.
Right, right.
Right, so push it back, anyway, that was my thought, that, that was the discussion, and that's where that came from. Land clearing.
Uh, we missed D, fencing shall consist of commercial grade.
Oh, yeah, we did, that's right. Albanized chain link fence ends in corner posts.
It's reasonable.
As code of government, yeah, I think that was, I don't know if that was from Bill from somewhere, but you can't put up cheap fencing, you gotta, right, alright, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that's reasonable.
Alright, so, um. Okay, so this is the next, if you go up to the top of the page, A, one A, but my page breaks are slightly off.
Um.
Sorry about that.
For.
But under twenty three, ten, two, land clearing.
Uh, Alice, for, for a moment, it's not, it's not in there as an edit, uh, but for twenty three dot nine, uh, design standards, lighting. Do we just wanna specify, uh, dark sky compliant fixtures and simplify that?
Yeah, I have that language, um.
Uh, well, it says where feasible, lighting of, uh, of the solar photovoltaic insulation shall be directed downward and shall incorporate full cutoff fixtures. There's a, we can just reference the standard dark sky compliant.
And comply with dark sky, what is it called? And be dark sky compliant, dark.
Yeah, shall be lived with, uh, only dark sky compliant fixtures. Do we, do we think that makes sense, do we wanna leave it as it is?
That makes sense.
With local, state, and federal law, all lighting on the premises shall be motion active devices, or do you wanna add it as a separate sentence, will be allowed unless allowed by that?
I mean, or we could just specify, yeah, add it.
You just wanted to replace it with one sentence?
Well, we could also just add it, and specify fixtures shall be dark sky compliant.
Okay, yeah. Specified fixtures. Shall be. Dark sky compliant, but you put in.
Is that sufficiently detailed to be meaningful?
A dark sky.
If it's not, we'll fix it at the public hearing.
Fair enough.
I, I have, I don't know, I don't wanna get too far in the weeds, but. Glare, in the, in the, if it had a better definition, lighting, okay, lighting shall include. Let's call the, and, okay, so here's what in the, the other revised version, it said lighting of, uh, basically, we even acronym it for the solar field. Including appurtenant structures shall be limited to that required for safety and operational purposes, shall be shielded from abutting properties, and shall comply with international. Dark sky standards FSA certification requirements, there shall be no illumination without personnel on site.
Yeah.
You wanna take that?
Let's use that language instead.
Okay. I'll take it out of my. Take it out of this and send it down to our pen.
Yeah, cause that, that really goes to the hot button issues that I think people are concerned about, they're concerned about the views and disruption to the, and that's a big one.
Okay, so, I circled it for Mark, and Mark, you can put a note on that replaces this. Right, so that, so that's the new language for twenty point three point nine, design standards lighting. Everybody agrees, right?
It's not.
Agrees with that, okay. So there's something.
Is G M S P I applicable here, what's, what's G M S P I?
Ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation.
Yeah, that was, yeah, ground mounted, so, but you're gonna make it whatever the. Photovoltaic installations or something, all. Photovoltaic installations, including battery energy storage systems or something, cause we, we haven't adopted that acronym.
Yeah.
That came from them, but there's something about the clear cutting that I don't wanna lose track of, it's twenty three, ten, two. Okay, it's still coming up, alright, so maybe that's the next thing. So if you go down to the very last line in that page, twenty, well, maybe it's the first line in your page, twenty three, twenty point three point ten point two land clearing. A.
Okay, there it is.
Yeah, on the draft, it says, land clearing of natural vegetation shall be limited to what is necessary for construction operation and maintenance of the solar system. Or otherwise prescribed by applicable law, regulations, and bylaws, which have to be there, because you have to have like gravel around these best systems and stuff. But then the next sentence is problematic, existing vegetation shall remain as required in setback areas. And then, what I would like to strike, is except where such vegetation would shade the solar energy system. However, in no event shall the clearing of existing vegetation in the setback exceed half the required setback width. So if you do this, you're, you're cutting our seventy five acres to.
Hundred feet, frontage to fifty feet.
And the fifty, yeah, so I think we need to strike that, except.
Mm-hmm.
Existing vegetation shall remain in the required setback areas, period.
That makes sense to me.
Yep.
So if you have, if you're unfortunate enough to have the hundred thousand, a hundred year old oak tree, exactly a hundred feet back, you know, but inside, on the right away, you can't cut it. And if it cuts into your solar field, too bad, so sad, right, it's sort of balancing the neighbor's interests, right? Anyway, so I thought we should do that, and then the last sentence could say, adequate erosion control measures shall be provided for all proposed, proposed land clearing that. That was a big problem with twenty twenty one, they pulled the rocks out, they filled the wetland, it was like, oh my god, alright, so anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
Nothing changes then, some of these, the writing's different because they were actually patched in in prior amendments, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so modifications, twenty three eleven two, I just, uh, added, including the addition of battery energy storage facilities, after all material modifications. Including whatever we're, we've now calling it, right, battery, B, B E S S, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
So that has to go there, same thing with, uh, removal requirements under one, uh, so twenty three twelve one, removal requirements. One A, physically remove all R scale ground mounted solar, da, 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 structures and equipment, including this, in, uh, equipment. Solar battery installations, I put it after equipment, and then security barriers and transmission, it's a decommissioning, right, so you got the decommissioned. So that would be it, if you wanna go with the Band-Aid approach.
No, we came up with a new name for it.
Incremental improvement.
Incremental.
I couldn't remember what it was.
The increment, it doesn't, it doesn't prevent clear cutting, but it does limit it to five acres, right, so you're not gonna have, so I think it.
It's, it's good for a year.
It's better for a.
Right.
It's also subject to the public hearing, so people came in, and that was something that they strongly advocated for, that's why we have public hearings, so.
Okay, there are a lot of other, you could keep my list, my wish list, in this, if you wanna go on, do something more with it.
Uh, but it's.
We'll just call you back before we have more discussions.
No.
Yeah, well, it's, it's certainly not our final pass through, because this is, what we would vote on tonight, assuming someone makes a motion, is to transmit it to the select board.
You can cut.
For them to transmit it back to us to hold for public hearing. So, um, we would get another pass through for the public hearing, we would also. So, um, we would get another pass through for the public hearing, we would also receive public comment, so if there were modifications that we made it, uh, minor tweaks, we can make them then, so. Uh, would, uh, is there any further discussion, or would anybody like to make the motion to transmit?
I will make that motion, sir, to, what do you want for wording? Approve our updated solar bylaw?
Transmit the proposed solar bylaw changes to the select board for review. Uh, do you have other specific words you need on that, or?
Um, nah, that's fine.
Okay, that's.
That's all I.
That's the motion.
And you wanna, do you, do you need to end schedule for a public hearing, or do you, can you wait?
No, they, they send it back to us and then we do that.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, here in a first and a second, any further discussion? All right, let's have a vote.
Senator I.
LeDoni.
Holman's all right.
DeValley, I.
Monroe, I. Motion carries, it'll be transmitted to the select board to then have them transmit it back to us.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the, the hard work on that, and we're not gonna throw out the rest of the stuff, we're gonna use it, but that's.
I'm very happy, I feel.
That's, that's awesome.
Like, you know, you worry about your problems.
Name that bylaw after Alice, we'll call it the Alice Solar Bylaw.
Pay me a large consulting fee, you know, for that.
Oh.
Just kidding.
We'll pay you three times what we're getting paid.
Yeah. Well, we'll give you three times what you're getting paid.
Yeah, that's, yeah, there you go.
All right, so moving down the list, we have discussion of correspondence on marijuana odor complaints. Now, there are a couple letters that were sent from the Board of Health to the, uh, the special permit holders for outdoor cannabis cultivation. Now, just as a matter of history, the, um, the Board of Health Chair had reached out to see if we wanted to comment on that in October. I said, yes, we should, we would like to comment on that, please let us know as there's drafts and as things go forward. And then the first thing I heard about it was these letters that were sent out by the Board of Health. With that said, uh, the Board of Health has concurrent jurisdiction with us on some things and separate jurisdiction. So, they, they do have original jurisdiction for certain types of nuisance, nuisance complaints. What they don't have is authority over special permits. And there was some discussion about, uh, possible ramifications for the special permit in those letters. Uh, that is not within the scope of authority for the Board of Health, uh, that is exclusive jurisdiction of the planning board. There was a select board meeting last week where I was reporting our changes to, um, to the zoning bylaws, and I was asked by the chair, who was Katie Filling at the time, and Nate, if I could hang around and comment on what's going on with the marijuana complaints. So, uh, I did, uh, and, and I spoke to it the best I could in the moment, talking about the history of the special permits and, um, and talking about what we had received for complaints, because just to remind everybody, the special permits, if we receive three credible complaints, we're supposed to hold a public meeting, uh, to discuss those complaints and mitigation measures. Uh, and as of the time of the select board hearing, the planning board had only received two credible complaints, we never received a third one, so we never scheduled a meeting on that. Uh, since the select board meeting, the, uh, the Board of Health has sent over, uh, additional credible complaints, uh, reaching us to the three. But going back to the select board meeting, they had asked if, uh, if we would commit, uh, if receiving those complaints to hold hearings, or rather hold a meeting, jointly with the Board of Health, uh, to talk about the odor complaints and, uh, talk about mitigation measures and see if we can have a session where we can try to get everybody closer to being on the same page and having some reasonable expectations. So I had said at the meeting, if we do get three complaints, yeah, we'll do that, because that's what's in our special permits and that's our job. So we have those, so, uh, we will be scheduling a, uh, a public meeting in the near future to invite the applicants, um.
Do you say that's gonna be a joint?
Special permits.
Public meeting?
Yes, there is a request to make that a joint public meeting with the, uh, the Board of Health. So we'll be, uh, we'll give everybody an opportunity to, uh, to speak at that and move forward from there.
I'd like to request that the, uh, document that we have on our drive, the marijuana odor complaint, I'm having difficulties, I think you may.
I couldn't open it either.
You're gonna open it, I.
No, I couldn't open it.
The, the marijuana odor complaint, which is a PDF file.
Yeah.
We have some issues trying to open it up, so I don't even have.
I don't have a notebook, I have.
Yep, okay.
Well, yeah.
Before we, I mean, I, I, I'm not disagreeing that you have probably all three in different, that have met the threshold, I'd like to get the details on those. Okay.
We'll absolutely make them available for everybody.
Thank you.
Yep, I see that issue with that. Yeah, let me see if I can unpack this quickly.
Thank you.
So, uh, while Mark's taking a, a quick look at that, any other thoughts or questions or concerns on that?
I just think there's gotta be case law on that. We should be aware of it.
It is all very new.
I did.
And also the regulations, the marijuana regulations should be looked at, 'cause I think there is an argument that it's, it's not farming, you know, there's those cases that say it's not farming. But it is like, it is kinda like the manure on the field, it is a necessary ingredient, necessary, you can't grow it without the odor. So, I mean, we had really extensive discussions when we had these guys.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, if they are planting the lower, the lowest odor plant, which we required, right, and it's still very same odor.
No, we just simply said, we, no, we, oh, if I remember correctly, I think what we said is, is they would not be planting what are known as skunk varieties.
That's right.
That is it. We did not qualify anything but the versatile.
No, I think we did. I don't know what the one again.
No, yeah, we, so, we had written it as skunk varieties, and I can't remember if it was indica or sativa, but we specified the, the dominant strain.
We did, we have the.
Yes. The dominant strain, but we didn't say anything that it had to be the least odorous.
And that also came out of a special permit in the revision.
Incorrect me from law.
But that was the purpose of selecting that, right?
Yeah, that's.
Right.
I mean, I don't know if they're in compliance with a special permit. I mean, we don't have control over, well, she, she's arguing in her letter we do, because of bylaw, the, our general bylaws say for protection of the public.
I.
I believe we, during our discussions and during the, the permit process, they said the odors are coming from when they actually grind up the product and do whatever they're doing to it, and that's why for two months you get the strong smell.
So maybe they could close that.
I don't, I don't wanna go too far into substantive discussions on this, because we have not invited the permit holders to go in there and speak themselves.
Right, right, right.
Okay, okay.
It was a jurisdiction thing, I would say.
Yeah, and, uh, I, I do agree, uh, conceptually with what everyone's saying, that, yeah, there's also some homework that we need to do going into this.
I read.
Yes.
And that, um, we have some homework that we need to go into, uh, what were you saying, Mark?
There's a bunch of individual, individual documents in that complaints folder now that you can.
Okay.
Well, you have nothing here. Thank you.
Yeah, and like I said, I, I don't, I don't wanna go into any of those individually without having the permit holders here, because I don't wanna.
I think we have less, read those.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it makes sense.
Talking about somebody without giving them their due process. Uh, but they're, uh, they're in the folder and I wanted to give everybody an update on the status.
Yep. I, 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 I still see them there, but we cannot open them. What happens is, we get this here.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So it's the fact that it's a PDF file, somehow some PDF files we can open, there are others that we cannot open.
Yeah, they're opening for me.
I got them too, yeah.
You can open them?
I got it.
I don't know where.
Maybe you tried the same one again.
Try the refresh.
All right, well, we'll, we'll have to figure it out. We're, we're not gonna go through them in detail tonight, 'cause we don't have the permit holders here.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine, yes.
Right, okay.
Okay, any, anything else on that?
I skipped something on the agenda, though.
Oh, review of other zoning changes requiring town meeting vote, uh.
I just, I just, I, sorry, did you, that was just, that was only on the agenda, 'cause I wanted to tell you that I made one small change after the last time you discussed it, when we sent it to the select board. On the, on the item about wireless towers in the residential zone, we had made changes to say, what we discussed was saying, subject to Article eighteen, the wireless.
Correct.
In addition to having said, uh, only on certain lots, as, as specified in.
As, as part of the wireless overlay, this is.
I just simplified it all and said, subject to Article eighteen. So you're, so you're covered in case we make other changes to Article eighteen.
And I, and I saw that you came back with some analysis as to what those lots were.
Yes, yeah, separate issue, but.
Yep.
Yep.
Anyway, that was the only reason that I had it on the agenda, unless you wanna add something?
Yep, and the, uh, the select board did vote to transmit it back to us to hold for public hearing. We will be holding it for public hearing on.
March sixteenth.
March sixteenth, all right, so our next meeting. And, uh, I'm looking forward to finally having those corrections made.
Can I take just a moment before you move on, 'cause I'm gonna kill myself if I do not get these signatures that I've been chasing for a month.
Yep.
Is that more?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, so, that moves us down to inventory of all known adopted regulations not contained directly in the zoning bylaws. So this is a request from Mark, uh, to put together and make sure we have all of our regulations available.
Do we have this lined up?
Uh, because I'm, I'm not even sure what all of our regulations are. So I think we're gonna be looking towards Alice for some recollection on this.
The only other regulations that I'm aware of are the gravel pit regulations.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of the excavation, I'm aware of subdivision.
Subdivision, and then we did do operation, operating procedures.
I believe that that exists, and I may even have seen it once.
We talked about, I remember working on that, but I.
I can give you a copy. There you go.
Good.
You can.
So the question was, was did anybody know of anything else, other than those three?
Just send this down, here you go. I can probably send you a, a, a word document with them too, if you write me.
Okay.
All right, so.
Not really, that's.
Is that, uh, that copy?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so, next down the, the list is, uh, assign a representative to the Montechusit Joint Transportation Committee, uh, because there's about to be a, an open seat. That's one of the roles that Alice fulfills for us. Uh, and Alice, can you tell us a little bit about what that is and what you do?
It's a, um, meeting, it occurs at two o'clock in the afternoon, so if you wanna join it. Um, it's a virtual meeting. And they talk about, it's where, this is the group that puts together what improvements the, the state's gonna fund. I mean, that's, it does a lot of other things too, but that's its basic main thing, right? So, um, you know, I've been watching the town center sort of go through that, and now the Burn Shirt Bridge go through it. But they also do intersection designs, like the one, so it's really nice to know from a planning point of view what's on the list. And then also, um, they do do other things. They talk about MART, which is a continual problem, you know, uh, uh, which I, I've tried to resolve with them, so it has, it touches on some other issues. The MART problem is that, you know, it's supposed to provide transportation for the people that live in, um, the elderly, that live in, the senior housing over there. But we can't really get them to the doctors and back, because the van pickups at different times and they're trying to get small, you know, just, just a lot of things. They also talk about every grant that relates to transportation that becomes available. So if you wanted to get a sideways, sidewalk grant for, to bake sidewalks by the school, you know, a lot of stuff. I, I think it's worthwhile, it's once a month, it's two o'clock on Tuesdays, and I've forgotten what, which Tuesday it is, if it makes a difference to anyone that wants to take it up.
Yeah, they actually had one today at two o'clock.
Which I didn't make, I'm sorry to say. Most of them I have made over the last few years, but.
At two thirty. Yep.
It's pretty technical, if you have any knowledge of like engineering, it would be, would be helpful, but not everybody does on the committee. But a lot of people attend them, actually. Every town's supposed to have a rep.
Yeah, it, it does potentially mean, uh, opportunities for a decent amount of money for the town, so it is a pretty important role. And, um, I guess related to this, I've been, I've been taking more steps to be more active within the commission that, that runs MRPC. Uh, and I've been looking to get our second seat on the commission to be also more active. So it's a pretty big part of, of what our strategy as town needs to be in order to go after dollars, so we, we do need somebody to attend this. I do not have the bandwidth to take this on and work with all of the other initiatives with MRPC, so I really need, um, a member or associate member, uh, who.
All the associate members.
How long do the meetings typically run?
They're, they're not long, like forty-five minutes.
Not long?
The most, I would say.
The most important thing is to be.
And they get canceled, they don't meet in the summer, they don't meet Christmas, it's not a huge lift.
Yeah, it's banker's schedule, but the most important thing is to listen and be like, that sounds like a chance to get money, I should tell Nate about that. That, that, that's ultimately the most important thing that needs to happen at that meeting. Be like, oh, I should find Nate and Travis and tell them about this thing I just heard. That's ultimately the, the thing that we need the person who does that to do for us.
So it's usually a Tuesday at two?
I think it's Tuesday, yeah. Do you know what it is today? It's Thursday.
Do you know what today's?
Today's Wednesday.
Thursday's Wednesday, why?
But yeah, it is usually.
It's usually a Tuesday at two.
It is usually a Tuesday. Um, MRPC's been jumping around on their schedule lately, which has been a little frustrating, 'cause that's ultimately why we moved our first meeting, because they're supposed to have the commission meeting on the first Thursday of every month,
Right.
and then they haven't done that the last two months. So hopefully they go back to that.
If it's only forty-five minutes, I probably could squeak at it.
I would, I'd like to get involved here, 'cause I kinda know a lot, a lot what's going on in the town too. But I don't have time to be officially there, 'cause a lot of times I can't, I'm on the road, um.
I don't know if that's one that we get to set an alternate for.
No.
We do get, um.
I don't know either.
The invites do get sent to, I think, all of the MR, everyone who's on the MRPC list, so. I get the invite even though it's not me, and I think Nate gets a copy of the invite, so I think what we can do is we can also, in addition to whoever does this, we can set a policy where we send that invite out to the entire board, and as long as there are not three of us that show up to it, whoever wants can listen in on it, it's a public meeting. But, but we do need somebody to be the official person.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the person where the buck stops at, so.
Does she get paid apart?
I mean, ask the town, it's budget season. But it would be very helpful.
It's smack dab in the middle of my workday, so I would have to see what kind of strings I could pull. I don't think I have to pull very hard, um, but.
Late for a lunch.
Yeah, I mean. We'll think about it, I'll let you know, okay? Couple days.
Okay. So we'll, uh, we'll put on the agenda for the next meeting, and Erica will think about it. I'll, I'll send you over the information from the last meeting too.
Okay.
Um, because a lot of it you can also get, uh, from just looking through the information and then just listening in and then being like, hey, Hubbard Stink can get money from this.
Do they, uh?
I'd love to hear.
They don't do any kind of recording of those kind of things, do they?
I don't think they do. I've been trying to find that, and I wish they did, but.
Well, you.
They do have minutes.
Yeah. All right.
That they post.
So, that is the end of the breakwater schedule agenda, so matters not reasonably anticipated by chair.
That's not, this is not, this is not unanticipated.
Joe, watch it.
But I do, I do know there's an executive session on the tower on Monday, right? Is that, that's.
Right. You can, I believe we can get you to join that as an inviteee, because you're all, well, you're a named party.
I'm a named party.
You're, you're on the.
So, you can come to that meeting. Let's go out on a limb, you're a named party, you can come.
I, I just wanna make sure that you got a quorum. I don't even know that.
So, we, I had a discussion about that with Nate. I don't, it, we should get a quorum for that meeting. We weren't able to confirm that a hundred percent we need one, but we might need to have a vote to approve a possible agreement.
My intent is to go. That's as much as I can promise.
Yeah, so I, I will definitely be able to make it, assuming everything works out with childcare.
I, I wanna know.
I, I saw, we should be there for like seven-ish, right, or a little before seven?
All right. Yeah, seven-ish is when we would expect.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
So we, yeah, we, we definitely should get three people. So we, yeah, we definitely should get three people in case they need a vote to approve any of this.
My intent is to go, but, you know, stuff comes up, you call, like, if you get fire accident, anything, so.
I tend to go too.
Okay. But yeah, so that will be next Monday, um, their meeting, does that meeting start at six or six thirty? Either way, I, I sent a calendar invite out to everybody, and the calendar invite is for when Nate expected us to get called, not when the meeting starts.
Yeah, I got it.
The meeting starts before then.
I'm gonna make this March second then, 'cause I was here, today's the first, right? And I, I probably won't show up at the Vertex meeting, I just, can you, you, one of you guys can fill me in, right?
So, uh, just known for the record, uh, I have just received a letter addressed to the chair from Alice Livedal, uh, resigning her position on the planning board, uh, effective March second, twenty twenty-three. Including her position representing the planning board on the Affordable Housing Committee. So we'll need to come up with somebody for that next meeting to-
I was hoping we'd get somewhere, 'cause they didn't meet for six months, you know, to leave it in a better spot, the family met once.
So I have received letter of resignation, I don't believe we have to vote on acceptance or anything like that.
I believe the letter. No, I believe it.
I believe against.
These are, it's, no, so, uh, I guess-
We have to vote on this, sir.
Really?
Yes.
No, you don't have to vote on it.
It's like in Phil California, you can check in, you can never check out.
So, I, I would-
I had a great time, you guys, I just can't, I can't do daycare and do this, I'm seventy years old and it's too much.
Alice, I appreciate all you did. You came in this board without any background knowledge of the planning board, and she really directed us and did a lot of work, and thank God she was good with, uh, her words and her litigations for us to keep us in the way, because, uh, we, we had, we had some wild times.
It's a wild one.
Thank you, Alice.
Yeah, thank you for all the work you've done.
Thanks, guys. I'll miss you guys, honestly. Maybe I'll just come now and then.
Well, and if, uh-
No, you won't.
Probably not.
And if you haven't-
Probably be in bed at nine o'clock, chasing a toddler, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, if you haven't already heard, the, uh, the select board, upon hearing that you intended to resign from the planning board, decided that the dedication at this year's annual report will be to you for your service to the town.
Are you kidding me? Really?
Oh.
Wow.
That was nice.
Yeah, probably the biggest honor I've ever had, you know, great, wonderful. Well, that's very sweet.
So thank you very much, and
Thanks, guys, thanks, you guys.
Thank you mostly for getting me involved with the board and as chair.
Yeah.
Yep.
You're not cursing.
Yep.
I'm twisting.
Yeah. Uh, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for your work.
Thanks, Alice.
Really appreciate it. Miss you.
That, that is a full agenda, done effectively and efficiently.
Wow.
Alice, would you like to make your last motion?
Sure, I make a motion, we adjourn, not to be able to-
I'll suck it up.
All right, now, let's have a vote.
Stiger, eye?
Livedal, eye.
Holman's eye.
DeMellier, eye.
Monroe, eye.
Congratulations for your retirement.